Testing, testing. Andrew, can we test your mic?
Is Andrew, can you hear me?
Andrew, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's a little better. It's just very quiet. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Welcome to the August 27, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like everybody to please stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you. Warren, if we could have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Neal? Commissioner Kogler?
Here.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marlowe? Chairperson Christensen?
Here.
So the record will reflect that Neal and Marlowe are absent.
Okay, and we'll move on to staff introductions, please.
Marcy Reynoso and Ashley Peterson, Administrative Assistance.
Warren Fraes, Community Development Director.
Katie Bannister, Associate Planner.
And Andrew Falso from the City Attorney's Office is here as well.
Is that everybody? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to move on to the general public comments regarding matters that are not on the agenda tonight. Are there any of those items that someone would like to come up and make comment on? Seeing none, we're moving on. And I believe item one is to be retabled. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the Spring Street Mixed Juice item, that was continued from the last meeting. We need to continue it again. We need a motion to continue it to the next meeting, which is September 10.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second that.
Connolly and Davis. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item G, the public hearings for the zoning code update, which is item one under G. So if we have a report on that from staff? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Commissioners. So I'm going to give a brief introduction to this, and then Katie's going to give the presentation. So, as you know, we've been working on the zoning code update for the last few years. And with that, every time that we change a code section in the zoning code, it's going to have a ripple effect in other sections of our municipal code where there's a reference to the zoning code. So, the last meeting, we brought to you the zoning code for recommendation to City Council. And tonight, we are bringing all those other titles that have references to the zoning code that needed essentially a fix-it list. So we have titles 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 14, and 19 that all have some kind of reference to Title 21. And so, so we have gone through these. We've made, you know, some of them are just code references. And then some of them, there's conflicting standards with the zoning code that we needed to clean up. And so, together, the zoning code update that you saw at last meeting, along with tonight's recommendation, will be packaged up, and these are going to go to City Council for their full consideration as part of the zoning code update. So, we can't, we can't just update the zoning code. We also need to clean up these items as well. And so, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Katie so she can explain a little bit more about what it is that we're needing to update in the municipal code.
Thank you, Darcy. So, jumping in, so the first, the first few titles, 2, 3, 5, 9, 12, and 14, these really are just cleanup. Largely, today, the code references, you know, Passerobles Municipal Code 21.7357. And in the future, it's going to be 21.6321. It'll be just a different number. One of the more significant changes was in Title 2. It talks about what the duties of the Planning Commission are. Today, they're, the words in red are there. Actually, the words in black and those in red are there. We're proposing to strike the words in red and then just make reference to other code sections where the Planning Commission's duties are explained in a lot more detail. So, Section 11.12.030, that's a section we didn't touch, but it does make reference to the fact that the Planning Commission can make modifications to required frontage improvements. So that's not a change to Section, or to Title, excuse me, Title 11. But we just put it here as a code reference to make clear that that's one of the things Planning Commission can do. Of course, Title 22 is subdivisions. As the Planning Commission knows, you are the review authority for parcel maps and tract maps, and so that is why Title 22 is referenced. And then the meat and potatoes, what we've been going over for multiple years here. Title 21 is where the bulk of the Planning Commission's duties live. And it really, in Title 21, in Section 21.08.030, which you've already reviewed, specifies all the different things that the Planning Commission can make, can take action on. And so that is one of the more substantial, just code reference sections. But like I said, there are these in Titles 3, 5, 9, 12, and 14. So I'm not going to dig into any of the others, but we can certainly talk about them. We did provide you with a, with a, with tract changes this time. I know that was a concern. And we got so far ahead with the zoning code where it became impossible to go back and do that. But with these changes, we were able to bring you the tract changes. So that's what you're seeing in the agenda packet this evening. So, jumping into some of the more substantive changes, one of the big ones is in Title 7. Title 7 is health and sanitation. The other chapters in Title 7 are things like garbage collection and camping and recycling and hazardous waste, how we deal with hazardous waste. There's also a chapter in there about mobile homes and mobile home parks dating from, I think it's the 1960s. Staff's recommendation is to repeal this chapter. Even today, there are existing standards in both Title 7 and Title 21 regarding mobile home parks. And the standards conflict even today. We'll see some of those standards in the next slide. But the real, the best location for these mobile home standards is in Title 21, where we talk about land uses, other residential land uses. It never really made sense for mobile home standards to be in Title 7. And so staff is recommending we remove them from 7. And Planning Commission has already reviewed new standards that are already in proposed Title 21. And those are in Section 21.69.140. And then, something else that's in Title, in Chapter 7, is a really exhaustive list of how to process an application for a mobile home park. These are our standards, or these are processes that we go through for any development project, for any business. You need a business license, and so we're recommending that we strike all those as well and just look at the other code sections where these things are already addressed. So here is a table that really summarizes, and I know there's a lot of words up there, but summarizes. So in blue are the current standards. Title 7 is the lighter blue. Title 21 is the darker blue. But remember, these are all in place today. So proposed Title 21 is there in the orange kind of salmon color. So if you look at, even in the existing code today, Title 7 says that for a mobile home park, you need three acres. In Title 21, you need five acres. So that's obviously an internal inconsistency. Similarly, the density that's allowed in Title 7, you can do 15 mobile homes per gross acre. In Title 21, we only allow five mobile homes per gross acre. Obviously, we don't want to have these kinds of, someone comes in and we, and even staff doesn't know what standards to apply. So, now, in orange, you can see the minimum site we are proposing in one place, that the minimum lot, the minimum site area would be one acre. We continue the 200-foot-wide lot requirement, as is in existing Title 21. Similarly, we would standardize the density to just be what is allowed by the zoning district. So the only zoning district where mobile home parks are allowed in the existing code and carried forward into the new code is in the R4 zoning district where 16 units per acre are allowed. The same as for an apartment complex, we would allow the same density for a mobile home park. In addition, one other change, or what seems like a change, in the Title 7 and Title 21, conflicting standards for road, internal roads or driveways. Today, there's some conflicting standards, and we're proposing to just defer to the standards for residential projects, which is a 24-foot-wide driveway if you've got five or more units, and 12 feet for up to four units. And so, again, just standardizing mobile home standards so they don't have higher standards than any other residential development in town. Another thing that changes and is standardized today, open space standards are different whether you look in Title 7 or 21. And again, we're, we're proposing that the standard for the multifamily zoning districts be applied. So just like you would have in an apartment complex, for a mobile home park, you would be required to provide 375 square feet of shared and private open space. I could go through many of these standards, but they are, most of them just require the same thing that would be required for an apartment complex. Some things that are a little bit different, landscaping. There is a new requirement to require at least 10 feet of landscaping between the public right-of-way and the perimeter wall of a, of a new RV park, or a new, excuse me, mobile home park. So 10 feet of landscaping. And then, something that today is not required in mobile home parks, but is required for apartment projects is laundry rooms. There's a frequency requirement, one laundry station for every five units, and then storage rooms and lockers, which is what we expect for apartment complexes, and we would expect to see them in a mobile home park as well. So looking at the proposed Title 21 standards, these are things that the Planning Commission has already reviewed and has already recommended approval. But just so that we know, we're getting rid of all this, the standards in Title, or we're proposing to get rid of all the standards in Title 21. And this is what we would be replacing it with. So, mobile home parks, as I said, are only conditionally allowed today in the R4. And that is proposed to carry forward as a conditionally allowed use just in the R4. The standards for mobile home parks are being moved into Title, or excuse me, Section 21.69.140. And these are the standards that are there. I've already summarized them in the table that we saw, the blue and, and kind of orange table. But you see the building site, you need a fence or a wall around the perimeter of the, of the project. Landscaping, access needs to come from internal driveways. This is to prevent having lots and lots of driveways where the, so along a public right-of-way, we wouldn't want to see a driveway every 10 feet or so for each trailer. You would need to enter the, enter the park and then get to each mobile home individually from internally. Of course, we want appropriate fire protection. And then setbacks are largely carried forward from the existing standards that were in Title 21. And also in existing Title 21 vehicle storage, the current and proposed codes would require storage areas for boat trailers and other RVs as required by the review authority for a conditional use permit. That would be the Planning Commission typically. So I'm going to move on to Title 8. So Title 8 is a whole title regarding animal control. And there are multiple references to Title 21. Those are being proposed to be changed. You can see those in the staff report, all the different references. We're not changing the tables or any of the standards, but just those code references. One thing that we did talk with the Planning Commission about early on in this process was bees. And the Planning Commission had indicated they wanted to allow beekeeping in the city of Passerobles. So Title 8 is where the prohibition currently lives. So this is where we'll be repealing it. And then, of course, the Planning Commission has already reviewed new beekeeping rules that are in proposed Section 21.69.0408. And those include things like a minimum lot area. You have to have appropriate setbacks. Your hives can't be right on the property line, the number of hives you can have, and all the different standards. And so we've already reviewed those, so this would just repeal the prohibition against beekeeping altogether. Moving on to Title 10. So this is really about the oak tree preservation ordinance. As the, the Planning Commission recommended to City Council, we are changing the review authority for certain oak tree removals. So the proposed Title 21 would allow one oak tree that is being proposed for removal where there's no development. It would allow the DRC to review that. One to nine trees that are proposed with development would go to the Planning Commission. And then council would be the review authority when there are 10 or more oak tree removals. So that needed some changes to the oak tree preservation ordinance. A lot of the changes go, change, a lot of the edits changed the use of the word director to zoning administrator, which is the language that is proposed for Title 21. At this time, that still continues to be the same person, the Director of Community Development. But it's always possible that the department would get large enough that someday those might be two different, two different people with two different authorities. And then another change that caused a lot of, you know, edits to Title 10 is changing City Council to review authority. The ordinance frequently talks about when council approves a removal. And because Title 21 would allow the DRC and the Planning Commission to approve some of those removals, we needed to change the language from City Council to review authority. There's also, there are a lot of numbers in Title 10 that are spelled out, things like 2 and 1/2, which as you read through a standard, it's really hard to pick those out with your eye. And so staff is recommending all of those be changed into numerals to 2.5 there, as you see, instead of 2 and 1/2, which are sometimes hard for the eye to catch as you're reading. There's also some typos that I think are just in the online version of the code, but they, the code often refers to the CR2, which has no meaning. I think the intent was to be CRZ or Critical Root Zone. And so those typos are also corrected in the draft before you this evening. So the last title with substantive changes is Title 19, which is titled signs. Interestingly, the sign standards that we use and that the DRC applies on a regular basis are actually in Title 21. So the, the standards in Title 19 are proposed to be repealed. But we are recommending that the standards for billboards that are mostly in Title 21 today be moved into Title 19 to be a standalone section. There are a lot of standards within the California Outdoor Advertising Act that give special rights to billboards. And so we wanted to make sure that our billboard standards were in line with the California Outdoor Advertising Act, but allowed the city to, to, to exercise all the powers that we are allowed under, under that California law. One of the only large substantive changes that is being proposed to the standards is to increase the spacing. Today, it's 1,000 feet for between billboards on any one side of the freeway. We are proposing to increase that to 3,500 feet. In addition, also largely because of the California Outdoor Advertising Act, there's some new language about non-conforming signs and when the city can consider a billboard a nuisance, when the billboard companies can continue using, using billboards, and then also restoration if there's ever damage to a billboard. I believe that is the last title. Yes, so those are all the, the kind of nitpicky, make sure we clean up all of our mess that we made as we moved through Title 21. This is a slide that you've seen multiple times and what the objectives of the overarching zoning code update has been. And I think the biggest thing that this, that these amendments tonight address are to be internally consistent. We want to make sure that the changes we make to Title 21 are reflected throughout the rest of the municipal code. And then, in addition, we're looking to streamline some reviews through the oak tree ordinance and the mobile home park standards. We want to make sure that we have one standard for each thing, and it's clear how we, how we should do reviews of those types of projects. So the Planning Commission has always has options. The first would be to take no action. But we are hoping to take this as a, as a comprehensive recommendation to City Council. So number two, it would be to recommend to the City Council that these code amendments be approved. You could certainly make changes to what we, staff is proposing. If you, if you've caught any additional errors or amendments that are needed, that would be option number three. If you feel you don't have enough information, you can refer it back to staff for us to bring you additional clarification. Staff is recommending that you adopt the six resolutions that are in the, in the, in your staff report. And so here you can see them. The, the first resolution is really just related to Title 2. We did see a slide on, on that. That's really about the Planning Commission's authorities. Resolution B is really those purely cleanup items where we didn't change anything. We just fixed the code references. So that's Title 3's, Titles 3, 5, 9, 12, and 14. Title 7 is about mobile home parks. Title 8 is, is the, the Title 8, the title of Title 8 is animal keeping, but really that's about beekeeping. The amendments are about beekeeping. Title 10, the amendments are really about the oak tree ordinance. And then Title 19, really about billboards. And I believe that concludes my report. Yes, questions and discussion?
Thanks, Darcy and Katie. Appreciate that. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Want to start, Mr. Kogler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions and then kind of a comment. It's, and I'm focusing on the vegetation in Section 10. It's referenced that the DRC will be the review authority for a single oak tree and quote, "when there is no development occurring." Can you define development? If somebody has an empty lot that's a single family and wants to build a house, is that development? Or does a lot have to be created or a lot line changed?
So, any developments, any grading or construction that is proposed, and, and you know, if that's the reason they're wanting to remove the tree, that would go at least to Planning Commission, depending on the quantity. So, this is really, you know, we're starting to see more requests for oak tree removals because the homeowners' companies are wanting, are wanting because the homeowners companies are wanting, are wanting fewer trees in close proximity to houses. So we have these trees that are in decent shape, they're not clearly, you know, dead and diseased, but there's a gray, you know, there's a gray area. So staff is wanting for the DRC, a public body, for there to be, you know, a small option for the, the community to have an opportunity to make comment on, on trees like that. Because currently, if, if, if staff determines that a tree is dead or diseased, the, the Director of Community Development can approve those, those kind of one-off trees. This would allow those kind of trees that are, they're, they're not being removed because I want to do an addition to my house, I want to put it in a new patio. This is, this is, I need to take this tree out for some reason, but it's not dead.
Good. Thank you.
And just to add to that, the way that the, so in Title 21, what was presented the last go-around, if the DRC is still not convinced that the tree would need to be removed with the arborist report, with the staff report, it can be denied, I believe, and then they can appeal to planning commission or forwarded to planning commission. But there is a process laid out so that if the DRC is unable to make a decision to remove the tree, that it would go up through that process.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that'll tie into my third question, which I'll get to in just a second. It's referenced in Section 4, 100155, that you have to do an inventory of trees, which obviously makes sense. It says inventory map location size and CRZ of any potential impacted oak tree. Then it goes on to say the inventory should be prepared by an arborist, registered civil engineer, land surveyor. So am I reading this correctly? That's only the inventory that can be done by a land surveyor or civil engineer, and if there is a report to take the tree out, that has to be a certified arborist?
Right. The arborist is going to analyze the, whatever impacts are being proposed and the condition of the tree. The inventory can, you know, we often get arborist reports that are based on what a surveyor, you know, surveyor's gone out and said there's a tree and it's, they've plotted it where it exists on the lot and how far it is from, from proposed development. But the arborist really looks at the tree, the tree's health, the impacts of whatever grading or, or other development are proposed.
Okay. Yeah, because I think the inventory is fine, but the expertise, the arborist is required for the tree assessment. And then finally, going back to what Darcy just referenced, when I read through this review authority section, I read that thing about three or four times, and thought, you go to a higher one, you go to a lower one, it's got all that language in there, and it didn't make sense to me until I kind of put it back to the review authority, which actually is in Section 21. And my question is, for the sake of clarity, since we're trying to make this streamlined and clear, can we move that language about council, planning commission, and DRC to be with the rest of the tree standards? So you understand, because, you know, if you look at this, you have to go to a totally different section to understand that, well, yeah, it's only one tree, it goes to DRC, or it's two to nine trees, it goes to planning commission. Is there anything wrong with pulling that out of Section 21 and integrating it here or being repetitious at the expense of being repetitious?
Yeah, one of the, the, you know, when Genevieve started working through our code, there is a lot of repetition, and so her recommendation was to try to eliminate repetitions. What happens is when we go to do amendments, we'll change it in one place and then we forget to do it in the three other places that it's repeated. And so, you know, this is our recommendation, but absolutely, they could be, those numbers could live in the, in the oak tree ordinance.
It just seems that would be far clearer for the average reader picking it up. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Katie, on Title 21, I just, I don't know, I think you're proposing the language there to increase it from one acre to five acres for mobile home parks. What, I just want to know what the rationale, one acre sounds kind of small for maybe a mobile home park, but I just want to understand what the rationale was for the change.
Sure. So the Title 21, that's, that's what's already in the code that you looked at last week and over the last few years. So tonight, all we're, we're asking is whether or not we could repeal Chapter 7.24, I think it is. It's the mobile home standards that are in, in Title, Title 7. So there aren't very many lots in town that are five acres. I mean, when you, when you say you could only establish a mobile home park on five acres, you're basically saying there's nowhere in town.
It's not going to happen.
Yeah, exactly. And so staff's, you know, obviously you need some space because you need to put driveways and, and there's got to be some, you know, economy of scale. But staff, you know, is, has recommended an acre as, as that minimum size. Five seems prohibitive from ever having an additional mobile home park.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I just, I appreciate that. And on Title 19, on billboards, and I, I'm fine with 1,000 to 3,500 recommendation feet in between billboards. When we're talking about, does the language, because you're familiar with it more than we are, does it only apply to highway corridors where billboards can exist? And does it say that where they can exist? I wouldn't want to see a billboard maybe on the side street somewhere, residential street.
It, it does say that. I don't know if I can get to it quick enough. Mark, do you have the page number?
It looks like it's on page 49 of the, of the staff report.
Okay.
And it, it, allowed locations is adjacent to highway. So a billboard sign shall only be permitted on a property adjacent to US Highway 101 or State Highway 46. And then for purposes of the, of this title, adjacent to includes properties separated by a frontage road, but does not include lesser street corridors. It does also, the next section lays out which zoning districts where it's allowed, which is the C2, C3, and M zoning districts, which is what is, is in effect today largely, but it, this just makes it more specific.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, regarding Title 7 to Title 21, you're capturing all the standards from Title 7 into Title 21, and I see about 13 categories here, and we've increased that to 16. I'm just wondering, and I haven't done a, a category review of Title 7 for all these categories, but you've captured them all, I assume, all. Yeah, there isn't a, like a, a Title 7, different standard that isn't listed here that we haven't captured.
This is really just a summary. One of the things we saw that is being carried forward, I think I got to go forward, was proper fire, fire protection. I think that's in Title 7, Title 21, old Title 21 and new Title 21. So no, I did not capture every single thing, but I captured those that would be changed.
With regard to Title 10, oak tree, is there a trigger for any higher level review or, or consent for the item to go to a higher level if there's a higher, a bigger trunk size to the oak tree?
So we, we brought this issue to planning commission multiple times, and, you know, I'm not sure that we got it exactly how it should be, but what we fell on was just quantity of trees. So it, you know, any tree over six inches needs, six inch diameter, needs an oak tree removal permit, and how it's laid out in the draft is just on quantity of trees with no, no reference to size. But as Darcy said, any review authority, which means the director, excuse me, the zoning administrator, the DRC, the planning commission, if you're uncomfortable, you can send it up.
And to add to that, you know, the recommendation from the planning commission at the last meeting was to bring the zoning code back twice a year for anything that isn't working or, hey, we got it wrong. So if that is something that ends up not working, that would be a great, you know, thing for us to consider, and it would affect both Title 21 and Title 10.
Okay. And kind of related to Commissioner Davis's question regarding Title 19, billboards, where does the review authority of the city leave and the review authority of the state takes priority? Is it consistent? Because you're talking about freeways, so you have the state of California highways involved in that.
Yeah, Caltrans definitely, they also issue permits for, for billboards, and there is language in the, it's actually in existing Title 21 and moved into Title 19 that requires the, any applicant to get Caltrans permitting as well, so that's carried forward. But what's in Title 19 is really, is just the city's authority. It's, it's like, the state has taken most of the authority around billboards, so we've just put in the, the things that we can have a say on. That's what's in Title 19, is the local authority.
Okay, thank you.
But the city's entitled to be more restrictive than the state, so they have to get both permits. Our permit can potentially be more restrictive, and that would be the final say on whether it goes in or not.
Okay, so that raises another question. If the state has more restriction than the city would desire, or then wouldn't the state, being a higher authority or higher level authority, take priority over that? Like, let's say you, you would like to have the spacing closer than the state allows. Who has the final say?
Yeah, then the state wouldn't issue the permit, because you have to meet the state's standards.
Okay.
But on spacing and sizing, they're pretty permissive. But for example, I think, you know, the state allows very, very large billboards, but there is a limit. We couldn't allow one larger than what the state allows, but we can require it to be smaller than the maximum the state allows.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kogler.
Thank you, Chairperson Christensen. Katie or Darcy, in Title 10, just a clarity. I saw that we cleaned up. We, we use the word review authority a lot. When I look at, for example, Section 1 under K, it actually defines review authority as zoning administrator, development review committee, planning commission. It doesn't say city council in there. However, when I fast forward to Section 4, there is a spot where we indicate final review authority, and it used to say city council, so I'm to assume final would be council. So I guess my question is, we're trying to, to clarify some of this thing, make it easier for the reader to understand. My question is, I get what we're trying to do, but when you, we use the word review authority a lot, and I only seeing it, I only see it identified or described in one section. So as you continue to read, I see review authority, review authority, and then I also see zoning administrator quite a bit. So the question would be then, okay, who's the zoning administrator? So I'm just, just in clarity and thought on that.
Yeah, if city council was left off of the list of review authorities, that is a mistake, and I'll make sure I correct it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, on page 36 of 109, I'm not seeing that we've, I do see some track changes that we say, you know, review authority, but it, it seems worth including those as in their each, their own definition.
Right.
So we can definitely include that.
Okay.
And make some fix, that was a good catch, actually.
Just for clarity purposes, right? So the reader reads it, they understand exactly who that review authority is.
Can you, which, which page number are you looking at where you think there might be a question?
I started on 36, 36 of 109. It's actually, it started with item K and under Section 1.
Okay. All right, we'll check that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have a few questions, clarifications, more for clarification aspects than anything else. Under the, on page 18, for the proposed for 3, 5, 9, and 12, and 14, when it refers to visual blights, the blight section there, item, and it'll be number, letter D, I apologize for making it so confusing, but Section 4, letter D, it mentions, you know, a blight could be something that has to do with personal property, decoration, design, unsightly reason of condition, I'm paraphrasing a lot of this. Who makes that decision and where is that finalized? I think the other items seem very detailed because they are what they are, you know? A dumped refrigerator is a dumped refrigerator, abandoned on the street or the side street, and you can ask around for ownership or, but the other part seems a little ambiguous, and I was just wondering if there was any thought as to how to define that or have some way that that can be described or explained if I'm a person walking in off the street?
So one of the things with, with these text amendments, so this is for affecting Title 9, I believe, is we're just showing you a paragraph where there's a reference to Title 21, and that's the only paragraph we've given you. So we've omitted the rest of Title 9, so I'm sure it's in there.
Okay.
But that is why we don't, we don't see any more information. It's because that's the only section in Title 9 that had a code reference, and so we just did that, just a snippet.
Okay. Because that, that would have been, you know, and I didn't go in and look at that section, so I have to admit, I'm sure it probably explains it, but I, I think that that's something that needs to be clear. And that kind of falls over to the review authority aspect. I'm in agreement with my other commissioners that somehow I feel like that needs to be, especially that, that Section 1001055 under Section 4. If there's some way we can streamline that a little bit better, it is a little confusing, and I don't know if maybe moving it to 21 is the answer, but I think we should have some discussion about maybe, you know, clarifying that or making that streamline a little better. Did you?
Yeah, just to clarify, Mike's suggestion was to go the other way, that what's in 21 should be here, because this is where it's discussed.
Okay, so I have that backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, streamlining to me, I, I think it's very important, because I do feel like it's confusing. Thank you for that clarification. The other question got answered. Moving on. This was more to curiosity again, clarification. So on the table on Exhibit A for the, the Table 804150, where it discusses the animal types and stuff, is this discussed in greater detail what small animals are?
Yes, there is a definition for small animals.
Page 32, I apologize.
In Title 8, it defines small animals. It includes things like dogs and cats. It, I'm not going to get it right. I think chickens, up to six chickens, like there's animals that are defined as small animals, yes.
Okay, great. Because I mean, it does combine them in, in part of that description, so I thought I'd better ask for clarification purposes. Thank you. That's page 13. So as I read through this, and even previously as I was reading through this, the term zoning administrator, I understand the, the change or the addition of that. Will that be clear as to who that person is? If I'm, again, I'm thinking of a person that is the general public, they're going to come in and ask you, they're going to go to the front desk and say, who's the zoning administrator? Is it going to be clear on the, on this, in these codes, who, you know, basically, if, if that's the director and a zoning administrator? I mean, I think we need to clarify that. I'm not sure how that's going to be done online, because I know a lot of this is going to be, you know, culminated and put on the website. Is that going to be something that's going to be clarified? I think that's going to be a question you're going to get.
You bet, yeah. It is defined in Title 21, and I'm not going to get it pitch perfect, but it's essentially the person who gets designated by the city manager or the community development director to be that zoning administrator. And it's the person who, on the staff level, can make decision, like the ultimate decisions on, on things that, where the zoning administrator is, the, the review authority, things like temporary use permits, oak tree removals when they're dead or diseased tree, there's, you know, there's a whole host. But yes, it is well-defined in Title 21, and, and we replace most, most references to director, community development director, we replace them with zoning administrator throughout Title 21. But yes, that person is a defined person. Today, it is the Director of Community Development, but that could change in the future.
Okay. And I could imagine I could see that being linked on the site, and you click on it, and hey, Warren's face picks, picks up, or somebody's face comes up on the screen, and this is the person I got to talk to when I go down there. So, okay, that's great. I love that. That's much better clarification. Let's see. All right, discuss the streamline for Section 100155. I agree with that. And I think I have, I think that's it for me. So do we have any follow-up questions for staff while? Done? No? Okay. So seeing more, no more questions from the commission, we'll open this up for public comment. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to come up and comment on these changes? Do we have anybody online, Marcy?
No callers.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll close public discussion, and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion. Do we have any commissioners that have a discussion or who want to make a motion on this? I think there might be, Commissioner Kogler might want to make.
Discussion point. Yes, several of us talked about the integration of this, a little bit of language on review authority from 21 into 10. Can we accomplish that, or do we need to reflect that as part of a motion?
Yeah, when we do, so let's do each one as a separate motion. So when you get to Title 10, if, why don't you just include that?
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then on, and really quick on that note, discussion, I, I don't know if a table in there would also help, I'm just throwing ideas out to staff, as, you know, visually making that a little bit clearer. That always helps. I mean, no person like me, I, I like those kinds of things, because it really helps me clarify. Okay, so we can take the motions one at a time. Why don't we start with item A for recommendation? Do I have that correct? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the page, I'm looking up here. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the page, I'm looking up here. So we'll start with item one, that's Resolution A. Do we have a motion or discussion on Resolution A?
Chairperson Christensen, I'll make a motion. Great. I've moved that, that we approve Resolution 24-XXX Amendment A, Amendments to Title 2, Administration, Administration and Personnel.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Kovarubius, seconds. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, let's look at item two, Resolution B. Do we have a motion for Resolution B? Or discussion?
Chairperson Christensen, I will move to approve Resolution 24-XXX, which is B, Amendments to Title 3, Revenue and Finance, five, Permits and Regulations, nine, Public Safety, twelve, Vehicles and Traffic, and fourteen, Waters and Sewers.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a rhythm going here. Oh, sorry. We got Kovarubius a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on to item three. We have a motion or discussion?
Chairperson Christensen, I will move to approve Resolution 24-XXX.
We will make you famous.
Which will make me famous. Item C, Amendments to Title 7, Mobile Home Perks.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
We'll second that.
Commissioner Davis. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, Resolution D. Do we have a motion for Resolution D?
Chairperson Christensen, we're on a roll. Resolution 24-XXX, which is D, Amendments to Title 8, Beekeeping.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Connolly, seconds. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Right, item five, Resolution E. Do we have a discussion or motion with recommendation, Commissioner Kovarubius?
Chair, I'd like to move approval of Resolution 24-XXXE, Amendments to Title 10, Oak Tree Preservation, with the modification that either in text and/or chart form, the review authority information that's in 21.08020 through 21.08050, excuse me, 070, be incorporated into the appropriate section within Section 10.
Do we have any seconds on that?
I'll second.
Commissioner Kovarubius, seconds that. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, final item number six, Amendments to Title, Resolution F. Do we have a motion?
Chairperson Christensen, I will move to approve Resolution 24-XXXF, Amendments to Title 19, Billboards.
Great, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Connolly, seconds. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. That's your last action.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to item two, the development of the new city corporation buildings and accessory storage yard. Do we have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Chairperson Christensen. So I've got just a few introductory slides, and then the, the designer of the project from Omni Design will be presenting the project in its entirety. We've also got the Director of Public Works here with us this evening, and I know she'll be able to help us with questions. This is a very important project for, for Ms. Berman. So this project is a new corporation yard for our Public Works Department largely, located at 2924 Union Road. So just to look at the location, so this is, this is an old aerial, unfortunately, from 2018, before Firehouse 3 was built, but the red star shows you the, the lot that the city has been developing. Firehouse 3, as the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of, is, is located on this site now. Ardmore Road, of course, now punches through from Golden Hill up to Union Road, so we've got some infrastructure improvements in the area as well. Someday, we will have an interchange. This is conceptual and not approved, and probably not exactly lined up to those roads exactly right, but someday there will be some road improvements here associated with the North Chandler Ranch, and then the new airport road, which will connect up to North. So lots of infrastructure improvements coming someday to, to this area. The, so this is, this project started back in, or was approved by council in 2021, a big master development plan for the entire property was intended to be completed in two phases. Firehouse, or Fire Station 3 was the first phase, it was the most time-sensitive part of the project. There was a, a SEQA document circulated and certified at the time. It, the, the scope of that MND did include disturbance and improvement of the site where we're discussing this evening, and so it, the environmental work has already been completed for the site. So Phase 1 was the Union Road Safety Training Center, that's, that's the firehouse that is there now, and Phase 2 now, and I should say, actually, originally Phase 2 incorporated a, a police station and some different improvements. The police department is not going to be using this site now, so this will be a new corporation yard for our Public Works Department. So Building A, and actually this part, so there'd be an almost 6,000 square foot utilities building, utilities and, and administration, so some of the activities that happen at the annex over on Pine Street today, utility building in particular would be moved to this building that's closest to Union Road. Behind that would be Building B, which would be for landscape maintenance, about 12,000 square feet, and then further south on the site, 17,500 square foot fleet maintenance shop. So some of those activities are happening today on Riverside Avenue on a site that the city no longer owns. So those are some really general, an overview. Like I said, Omni's going to dig into the details, so this is just some street view images, because the aerial was so out of date. So Fire Station 3 is in operation. This is, I mean, they still haven't finished frontage improvements there, so this is as it was being constructed, and then another view of the site. So this here, we're at Ardmore there on the left, and looking down Union Road, so you can see where the buildings would be located on the site, and I think that's the last slide we'll need from this presentation. And so now, I believe it's Shane from, from Omni is going to give us a presentation for the details.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. So, this is a rendered view similar to that last photo we saw on the corner.
Hey Shane, can you, I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
Apologies, sure. Shane Maples, Director of Architecture and the prime architect for Omni Design on this project.
Thank you.
The photo you see here is a rendered view, basically that last photograph we saw, looking at Union and Ardmore in the corner. So the building in the foreground is the utilities building. As a little summary background, most of this was covered, the fire station and this project were developed concurrently. So the property for the fire station and the subsequent training grounds was taken into consideration when we developed the corporation yard design. With that, you'll see later on, there's some overlap in terms of access, joint features, and the general layout of the property. As was mentioned, it has a utility building, second metal building for landscape facilities, and a third metal building for fleet maintenance. Let's see here, the, the space needed, you'll see the spaces here shortly as we go into the floor plans, but we have setbacks off the street, between each of the buildings, there's indoor/outdoor workspaces, and we've got well-ventilated and modernized spaces for the staff to be able to, to work on these various components. It's a campus-like setting in that each of the three components talked about here have been designed and integrated together, so ADA access, gates, circulation, yards, all of that was looked at holistically, and all of that's, there's some shared features between the three, as well as the individual needs for each of the program elements. And then we have native landscape, including trees and shrubs, you'll see at the end of this presentation, and decorative metal fencing, that all is in alignment with the city's ordinances. And then lastly, we looked at the character of the, the city's recommendations for that particular area in terms of the design, color scheme, and materials. So we'll look later on that the utilities building on the corner closely matches Fire Station 3 in terms of colors and materials. The other two buildings are a little more industrial in, in look to match the kind of industrial nature going down that road for the future developments there, but they also match one another. So at the top of the screen, that's existing Fire Station 3 in the upper right-hand corner. Behind that to the left is the future training facilities that, again, were integrated as part of this design, and the three buildings in the lower portion are the ones in question tonight. The kind of shaded area that's outlined there is the relatively 3.3 acres of development. So on the far right-hand corner in the lower right, that is the proposed utilities building, approximately 5,800 square feet. It has a frontage actually facing to the left, which is south, to a new parking lot. There are PDA stalls, permeable pavers, accessible path of travel, and then there's a back-of-house side that's to the north facing the corner, that has a staff patio, but we will see later on, there's also some landscape design there, and I'll mention, just for future reference, the future road alignment was taken into consideration and the placement of the building. So it's pulled back from the corner so that any future alignment doesn't interfere with this building's placement. As we move left, south, we come to that T intersection of pavement, that's the current primary entrance, and if you pull straight in from the road of Ardmore, you come to a couple of parking stalls and a gate. That gate is a connection to the existing Fire Station 3. It's not intended to be primarily open, but it's a secondary access in case there's maintenance, or any, you know, unforeseen issues that there's a, a secondary path for fire and/or the corporation yard. Those parking stalls are intended to be after-hours use, so anyone coming after the utilities building has shut down, there's a gate to the right-hand side, like I can show here on the screen. There's a gate right here to the right-hand side, that would be closed after hours, but those, those stalls here would still allow anyone coming to park, get out of their car, make a payment in a drop box, and then turn around and, and get back on Ardmore. There is another gate here, so essentially that T section is locked down after hours, allowing the public to come and exit, but not gain access to the utilities, fleet or landscape buildings, or the fire station. If we proceed further to the left, south, we come to the, the landscape maintenance facility building, that's the L-shaped building in the center. On the right-hand side of the building is the administrative offices, and then to the left, we have vehicle bays for storage, work area, and, and general loading and unloading of their equipment on a daily use. There's parking on the frontage and along the side of the building for staff, and then in the back portion of the building, there is a covered work area and a utility yard allowing them to, to do exterior fabrication, loading, unloading, short-term storage, et cetera, and that is surrounded by a CMU block fence so that they have some noise and privacy separation from the fire side of, of the property. Further to the left, we come to the secondary drive entrance. This one is where we start hitting some elevation as we move further south on Ardmore, but we've done vehicle simulations, again, we'll see later on that large vehicles, including bus, and the oversized equipment that is for the city fleet can all make this turn, and Civils work to lower the elevation and correct, you know, everything works for drainage, everything works for circulation. So ideally, fleet would come in, there's a number of bays here in the fleet building that are, these are, first three are short bays, the last three are pull-through bays for longer vehicles, and on the very end is a wash bay, as well as a space around the building for fire access or emergency kind of circulation around the whole perimeter of the building. I'll point out, while we're on this slide, that the corner area here of Ardmore down to the corner of the property, and heading up the property line, does start to drop elevation, so from the street side, you'll be elevated, there's a retaining wall we'll see shortly, and you drop down into the yard area itself. So if you're driving or walking along, the building is actually going to appear smaller, the parking is, is going to be submerged, we've got ornamental metal fencing there on top, so while you won't see a retaining wall from the street side, it does drop this corner elevation, and the building will sit a little lower there. This, as I mentioned, is just the future realignment. We know this is not final, but we wanted to just show that it takes into consideration future curvature and setting for that development so that the buildings don't need to be re, worked. There's also the extension to make the driveways function and whatever that alignment ends up coming forward. As I mentioned before, this is the, the circulation analysis, just showing that you can come and go from, so this would be the, the public parking and the public access to utilities, again, gates at each of those for after-hours, a gate here, again, for after-hours, but this represents all vehicle potential paths of circulation throughout the site for staff being able to bring service vehicles, as well as their own personal vehicles in and around the site. Fencing plan, what we have in this is, in the dark blue is the ornamental metal fencing, and apologies, this is actually updated, this carries to the corner and returns to the corner of this building now, so this is ornamental fencing along the entire frontage of Ardmore. It's existing now in that previous image we saw that it wraps around, so it's tying to that existing fence here, and it will match that ornamental fencing that's in place currently. And then on the, the backside, the light blue is the CMU wall, and then in the green, that is CMU below with ornamental fencing above on that retaining wall I mentioned. The utilities building, this is the, the layout, the primary entrance is here at the bottom, that fronts that parking lot I mentioned that will be available during office hours. You come into a secure lobby with reception. Once you come past that lobby area, there's restrooms, a break room at the back, as well as a, an enclosed patio area, covered enclosed patio area, and then off to the right, we have a couple of offices for administrative. If you go to the left, we come to a meeting room, an open work area, and again, a number of offices, and secondary reception for the utilities department. This is the proposed material and color scheme, again, very much matching Fire Station Number 3, so we have the same metal roof, the same wainscote and stucco in terms of the colors, and trying to match just the overall feature so that we have cohesive connection to the other city's project there next to it. The next building down, landscape, so the primary entrance is here with a reception counter, we have a number of offices for staff, a shared conference room. The shop area is meant to be where they can have meetings and, and daily prep for their team, and into the first two shop bays, these are short vehicle bays with one being a pull-through so they can bring equipment from their covered area all the way through. There is a mezzanine above that follows this dash line through the project for additional storage above. Two storage rooms for small parts and, and things that they get to on a daily basis, and then as you move further over, we have the landscape bays, this would be where they have access to and storage for lawn mowers and equipment, things like that, that they want locked up and secure. The elevations proposed for this building here, again, it's, these are proposed to be metal buildings due to the larger volume and, and kind of overall use for the building types. Corrugated siding, corrugated metal roof, we've done some red colors to designate things like the, the secondary entrance, this would be the primary entrance with some overhang coverage, we have some little sight lighting, we'll see the photometric study of the building lighting in a minute, and then we have the potential for roll-up or bi-fold or other door systems on the larger doors to, to have the option there for some lighting and the access that they would need for those large vehicles. Fleet maintenance- Fleet maintenance, very similar, has a, uh, entrance in their break room as well as a little side entrance here. They have a locker area, a couple of restrooms and a shower. Then there's a, um, a combined workstation and a manager's office. There are three short service bays. These would be for like, uh, regular work trucks, F-150s and such. And then three drive-through bays, these would be for the larger, uh, buses and oversized vehicles that would need maintenance on. There's no, um, there's no utility pits. Everything would be handled by, uh, mobile lifts so they could bring the lifts off to the side and store them there. And when they need, they roll into place and lift the vehicle for maintenance as necessary. There's also a mezzanine in this project. That's the dash line here as well for additional part storage. Off the side, we have a, a lubin compressor room. And then this last bay is a vehicle wash bay where they can pull, um, in and through for washing all the vehicles. And again, similar color scheme to the, uh, landscape facilities building. We've got some red denoting kind of the main entrance side and again, a similar kind of, uh, window, door, uh, color scheme. This would be the, this would be the Ardmore side and this would be the backside. So as the three go together with the utilities building in the upper left, fleet maintenance and, uh, uh, landscape, uh, facilities building, those labels are transposed, my apologies. But we've got, um, the door and roofing types as well as some indication of what we're thinking for coverings and signage for the project. This is the photometric study. So we're showing around each building, the building mounted lights and then as well as the pole-mounted lights that all of the, uh, direction is faced inward of the site. There's nothing outside, uh, lights village, but again, adequately lighting the entire site for the workers. Landscape plan, we have, um, a number of shade trees and accent trees. The, uh, accent trees are actually four types, so we'll work with landscape design later on to come up with a plan for how to vary those, but we wanted to have options to make sure it looks, um, uh, kind of cohesive and we weren't just showing one type of tree throughout the site. And then we have a little more, um, vegetated around the corner in the utilities building and then a little simpler, uh, ground cover around the rest of the project where it's more utilitarian and there's a little less area to take into account. These are examples of the trees, vegetation, as well as, um, ground cover presented. And then lastly, uh, when we went to, um, DRC, the couple items brought up to us was removal of chain link fencing. As I mentioned, that has been removed. We're showing ornamental metal fencing only now, so apologies, that color didn't match, but that was updated. And then we did illustrate in that other slide that the, uh, vehicle circulation is shown so that you get a clear understanding of the pathway through the site for all, all staff vehicles. With that, if there's any questions, I have a couple of sites for Civil, should there be anything related, but take any questions yet?
Thank you, Shane. Um, do any commissioners have questions for Shane? Sorry, Commissioner Kober.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a few questions. On the site plan, the 11x17s that we got, it's, it looks like the pattern is the same for all of the different surfacing. I think the easiest way to ask my question is every drive aisle, parking space, yard space within this developed area, either concrete or permeable paving.
So there is a distinction here. There is concrete in the, um, excuse me, I'll start with permeable pavers are shown along these kind of the denser dash areas along the utilities building and here to the back of the fleet maintenance building. That's, um, to do with stormwater infiltration necessary on the site. And then we have, um, uh, is it, Rachel, is it asphalt here or concrete? This is asphalt, correct. Okay. So then the, the solid shade here in the T section and then utilities is asphalt with the remainder, uh, around the fleet and landscape being concrete. And again, the reason for that is it's assumed that these are small, personal-sized vehicles, so asphalt would be an appropriate section, whereas the, um, fleet and landscape would be heavier and require a larger section, so then con- concrete for that area.
Okay. Um, in looking at this, first of all, I think it's a very well-done project. Uh, there's a number of C-trains on site, some stacked too high. Is that temporary?
Uh, I believe so, but...
Frida Berman, Public Works Director, that's part of the fire training center and not part of this project. But they are using those C-trains for training purposes.
Yeah, those are, I think, a demonstration of a larger C-train training tower that will be coming before the planning commission soon, but that'll be a separate project for discussion at a later date.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, and I think the final question I had, utilities and building administration building that's on the corner is kind of your hierarchy of better buildings than these three, at least in terms of materials. It's going to sit behind a fence that has screening on it right now. Is that screening going to be removed?
Yes, it's intended to be, um, temporary right now and it'll be removed and be all the ornamental that was shown, uh, right here.
Okay, so it'll match.
Right, correct.
Very good. I wasn't sure why you'd want to hide it.
Right.
Great. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Conley, did you say?
Yes, I have quite a few questions. Uh, first, uh, regarding the parking, how is, uh, this, I guess, being a future use and not knowing how many people are in there, how is parking determined on this, the parking number of spaces?
Certainly. So we did an analysis of the staff at each of these, uh, buildings. And then we also referenced the, the code requirements for the building and their use. So the current parking, including these at the back of the building, represent the, the minimum code and our staff required spaces for the project.
I noticed you have, uh, a truck facility and I've got a couple of questions with regard to the, uh, fleet facility. Uh, with regard to the, uh, truck turning, uh, plan that you have, that would be your circulation plan. I'm just wondering, is there any obstacles? Have you determined any, uh, potential obstacles for the largest truck that you might have for the truck turning template, like a truck turning, uh, uh, conflict with, uh, the building or fixed objects?
Right. We, we've actually done an analysis on the largest vehicle that the city says will be used in this site. That includes access from Ardmore, the grading and turning throughout the site. There are no conflicts. Everything works for those vehicles proposed to be brought on-site.
Um, on, I guess, the southwest side, you have some turning movements that look like they go outside the property line. Is that a concern? Is the property line going to be fenced or?
Certainly. So in this, uh, diagram right here, the, there's no property line. There is a work area line that represents the 3.3 acres for this. So the circulation is shown here. There would be, um, there's no fence, there's no property line. The fencing would be, pardon me, get to the fencing plan. So the fencing is shown here, an access fence in this back corner, fencing around here and across the back. So vehicles in that circulation plan can come through and return. They can come through and, and do a U-turn and come back.
So there's no physical barrier, but I'm looking at, um...
Sure.
DP2A and it has property or, uh, yeah, project boundary. I guess that's not the property line.
Yes, correct. So that, this dash line here?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a, a property boundary so that the work area limitations are shown for that 3.3 acres. But aside from the fencing that I was pointing out, there's no, um, barrier or separation.
Okay.
Once this training facility is developed, it will be a continuous paved area for circulation.
So I haven't looked at it, um, in detail, but I'm looking at your gate and I'm wondering about gate control. Who has control of the gates? Because from one side, it's the fire station, the other side, it's the utility office or the landscape facility or the fleet maintenance. Do they both have control? If one opens a gate, it might inadvertently leave that access for the other side unintentionally? So is there, who has gate control on this?
Certainly. So in the, the, the short answer is we haven't got quite to that level of design yet, but my design recommendation would be that they're all on a timer for closing so that after they're open, there's a 30-second window, a minute window, and then the gates automatically close. But I think we would, uh, have joint access for certain gates. So this gate that might potentially be used for the fire, that might come between landscape as well as fire. This gate might be shared between fleet, landscape, and if fire wanted access, again, they could have controls from their side for exiting. However, um, the fire department has their own circulation. Our job was to not interfere with that, but just to enhance, you know, any potential circulation with our project.
Something to consider, I think, yeah. Is there any trash enclosures on the site?
Yes, apologies, I didn't point those out. So there's a trash enclosure over here for the utilities building. And then, um, let's see if we have... There, that's a little bit better. So yes, so there's, uh, trash enclosure here and then there's a trash, uh, at the rear of the building for the fleet and landscape.
And, and I'm not sure of the details there enough. How will those be, uh, enclosed? What materials will be used?
Yes, I beg your pardon. This is per city standards, uh, trash enclosure. And then this is the, the roll-off and, uh, trash facility for fleet over here, my apologies.
Okay. So I still don't know how that'll look, uh, but that's what I mean.
Certainly, yeah. We, we didn't show a, um, a design for those, just we're gonna, uh, have those per city standard, um, trash enclosure design. The one here at the, the fleet maintenance is going to sit down below that retaining wall, so again, not visible from the street, but we could, um, include that later on for, uh, references to what that would look like, just block, uh, surrounds with the city standard guidelines, yeah.
Um, just a curiosity question. I noticed you have EV parking. I didn't count how many, but how is that determined and will there be fleet with a city has that are EV?
Certainly. So currently we're showing the minimum number of EV parking for the overall development. That's per, um, Title 24 Energy Code. Um, these spots along Ardmore are going to be, um, designed for future, uh, EV. So they will be stubbed with, uh, conduit, kind of set aside. So should the fleet move to electrification, they can install chargers, uh, including even if they want to do, uh, solar canopies or anything of that nature in the future.
Uh, with regard to the, uh, future alignment of Ardmore and Union Road realignment, uh, I guess basically, uh, it looks like you planned for the future alignment and, uh, I'm just wondering what triggers, what triggers the, uh, the changes and, uh, if landscaping has been considered in that basin area and what that would look like.
Are you referring to the basin area down here?
Yes, yes.
Uh, so the, again, the short answer for that is we tried to stay within that 3.3 acre, um, envelope for this project and keep landscaping, circulation there. This was merely to show that our layout and plan would work with whatever that future design is. So we haven't studied or looked at landscaping or basin improvements for that. That's, in my understanding, intended to come as a future city project. So even the final layout is not for certain.
Okay. And what would trigger, I guess, the, the project for the, uh, the new airport road and, uh, overcrossing for the freeway? Would that trigger this, this new alignment? Yes, okay. And, uh, the, I think my final question is there is, uh, oh, I have a, a couple more. Shield, shielding on the lighting, is, is there shielding on the lighting to reduce, uh, pollution control?
Yes, absolutely. It's all, it's all down focused with shields. So again, everything's staying on-site.
Okay. And then, uh, uh, I noticed that, uh, on, uh, your preliminary fence plan, you show a, uh, ornamental fence and you show an ornamental fence with screen. Do you show or delineate where the type of fence that has the screen versus the one that doesn't have the screen?
So, so again, apologies on this. There's an updated slide that didn't make it into this evening's presentation. There's only ornamental fence plain, so such as, uh, number two here. And then there's ornamental fence over a block wall. There is no screening included and same thing for the chain link. There is no chain link with privacy. So that's an error in the presentation. Sorry for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Just a couple of questions. I really do like this project. I'm excited about it. And this might be more of an operations Frida question, I don't, I don't really know. But is there any shared use? For example, you have a fleet maintenance area. Are you going to be maintaining fire trucks and what's the circulation or is it just too tight for that? Uh, kind of, that's probably more operations than anything, but it could be a circulation question.
Yes, we, um, self-service most of our 413 pieces of equipment and vehicles, including fire trucks, um, and other large loaders and backhoes. So yes, all city equipment is planned to be an omni-design accommodated those sizes in their design of the fleet.
Okay. And so should, uh, the fire truck from Station Three, uh, need to be serviced, the circulation would come out or there's no access from their property to the fleet?
So, so they'll, they'll be very fortunate in that when the final build-out, they could come straight through their bay and, and into the fleet, uh, yard without ever getting on the street. Or they could come out to Union and make the right-hand turn and come in as any other vehicle. So whether it's, uh, fire engine from another station or three, they have access a number of ways.
Okay. And when we look at it as a campus, are we looking at it as actually two campuses or one? I do see the colored differentiation. There's more green and in the public works, what we're talking about today and there's some more, well, there is some red, I guess, in there too. Is it meant to be slightly different or is it meant to be a consistent look throughout? I know the roofing is.
Certainly. So the, the thinking with the design was that, um, the fire station, the utilities building, front, Union and the corner more so that they should be more relative in terms of color scheme and design. And then the, the landscape and fleet have a little more interaction in terms of staff and overall use, so that those should be a little more consistent in their design and color palette. Again, um, our understanding is Ardmore, the rest of it, there's some more industrial design, um, vernacular that's coming with future projects. So we want the utilities building to speak to a more, um, public office kind of, um, design language that again, matched the fire station and then the other two buildings to kind of indicate that they're more for staff, less public approach. Um, so they, they relate more to each other than the utilities building. The campus design really speaks to the overall site layout in that drainage, grading, access, gates, all of that was looked at holistically as well as the future, uh, training and the existing Fire Station Three.
Okay. Um, and the last question, um, because we really require this of individual applicants in our city, is there any noise restrictions? For example, if you're doing maintenance, um, in the fleet maintenance building, any restrictions that it has to be done inside the building, not out where it could be visible? I mean, are there any restrictions? Is that a CUP question? I don't know.
Yeah, that might be more staff. The one thing I'd point out from a design standpoint is that was part of the reason we did, uh, a block wall perimeter in that, uh, kind of fabrication yard. Not only did it give any storage and, and, uh, uses somewhat shielded, but there was also some noise that way too. And then part of the design, having it set further back off of the streets, um, and then most of the, the work, uh, for those two buildings are actually within the building as they maintain vehicles, load them up, and then they go out to do their work around the city.
It's always good if the city is setting, you know, this, an example.
Exactly, yeah.
And so, um, anyway, no, I really like this design. That's all that I have right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Kovarouvias?
I just have a comment. I want to say, uh, thank you on the circulation. I thought that was a, a great, uh, addition that you made and, and to me, I think it was a very big improvement from the, if you put up future alignment, um, much better than the, yeah, the U-turn right there. And the way you showed it, it, perfect. That was fantastic. Great presentation and it's a nice project.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so there's no more further questions from, I was on DRC, so I didn't have any other questions. Moving on to public comment, does anybody want to comment on this project, please? Come on up to the podium and state your name.
Yes, hello, Jeff Carr, Passero Bos. Uh, the only additional question I had was about, uh, any wayfinding signage to get into where the utilities area is for bill pay. I mean, I saw the monument sign, but that's not a lot of help to somebody driving through from the public. And I assume too, you know, other, you know, uh, the actual workers for the city too, trying to find the right driveway to get in. It's, I wonder if any of that signage has been looked at yet. Thank you.
Do we have any other, um, public comments? Marcy, is there anybody on the line?
No callers.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to Commission. Would Shane like to address that, uh, from the public?
Yeah, so apologies not for mentioning the signet previously, but, um, the future road alignment as well as the current, there are two signs here from the street side, again, per city standards that would match. Let me see here, we've got that shown in the, right there. So again, so we'd have monument signs flanking that showing, um, the... So again, so we'd have monument signs flanking that, showing, um, the yard, the city emblem and what's there, and then once you enter the site, and you come in, there will be a sign here as well directing to the drop box, to Utilities, and to parking. So, um, if it's after hours, you're only going to have access to this area anyway, so it'll be relatively straightforward in terms of where you're going. And then, um, depending on the end operation, the gate at the back will always be closed, the gate here might also be closed, so again, if you're coming for Utilities, there's really only one place you can go and, and be directed for parking access.
Okay, so the signage on the site, you're saying will be more specific as you come into the
Correct.
To the site, okay, that was a, a good question. Um, okay, any other, uh, discussion, or do we have a motion, um, for, yes, Commissioner Kovarubius?
I'm just gonna make a, or I have a quick question, so what does this do to our current Public Works facility that's on the corner of Paso Robles Street?
That, that facility will remain, uh, housing streets and the water department. This facility replaces the, uh, yard on Riverside Avenue.
Got it, okay, thank you for that.
It's not exactly pertinent to this, but the police department is no longer on this site. Is there still plans for a satellite somewhere else?
I don't have that information.
Yeah, it's not relevant, I'm sorry, Frida, I shouldn't do that to you.
Okay, do we have a motion? Or any other discussion on this item?
Chairperson Christensen, I would like to make a motion that we approve Draft Resolution A, Attachment Two, approving Plan Development 23-04, subject to site-specific conditions of approval detailed in Attachment Two A.
I'll second that.
Great, Davis seconds. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovler?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thanks for the presentation, that was great. Okay, we'll move on to, um, discussion items. Do we have any discussion items there, Warren?
Sure or none?
Okay, um, consent calendar, do I have a motion to accept the can, uh, the consent calendar, or are there changes? Commissioner Kovler?
I would move the consent calendar approval, including Development Review Committee minutes for July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, and August 5th.
I'll second that. Conley, seconds. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kovler?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on, uh, for the Paso Robles streetscape, is there anything from the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Uh, no updates tonight on that.
Okay, um, we already did the zoning, is there any additional items for that tonight?
Yeah, actually, um, based on the Housing Constraints Committee, um, they had originally recommended that the city pursue, uh, expansion of the uptown zone, which is now being referred to as the Olive Street rezoning project. So we've hired a consultant to, um, move that project forward. There will actually be a neighborhood open house this Thursday, 6:00 PM, at Glen Speck, um, at the, uh, auditorium. Um, we basically sent postcards to all residents wi- within the zone, as well as those surrounding the zone. Um, this is basically an open house informational session, so we have a series of boards that kind of explain the differences between different zones, existing conditions and whatnot. It's really the opportunity for the public to come and see the information, we'll be collecting public comments. Um, we do have a council ad hoc committee, um, that then will be kind of vetting out the information gathered, so no decisions are being made, um, it's really just an informational open house, we're encouraging the public to attend. I think you received an email from the city attorney, um, basically setting the parameters, if you choose to attend, um, it's very important as a commissioner that you don't engage in any debate or make any, you know, positions known about it, um, that you'd just be there strictly to observe. So that is this Thursday, 6:00 PM, the Glen Speck, um, auditorium.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to DRC rotation schedule, do any of the commissioners have any, um, changes they need to ma- make tonight? Okay, seeing, hearing none. Let's bring it to Planning Commission comments, do the planning commissioners have comments? Commissioner Kovler?
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Kovarubius?
Just one, um, once again, it's a great job to staff, only because that whole zoning, holy cow, never-ending, never-ending project. Yeah, finally ending, right? But great job, great job to the entire staff for that.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I agree with that statement. Um, rather than a comment, I have a question, and I, I apologize for uh, not knowing the answer to this, may, in my neighborhood, maybe in some of yours, I have noticed, um, above-ground cables that are very, very large, and for example, uh, you go up Pacific Avenue, and, I mean, you really do notice the above-ground, uh, telephone poles and cabling, large, black. Is that fiber optic, optic, or what is that? Do we have any jurisdiction over that? I know we were, we want to see underground, but that's an older neighborhood, but what is that big, black cable?
Why don't you send us a picture of that, we're not aware of that, um, and we'll do some research and try to get back to you on terms of what that is.
Yeah, it really stands out, and I don't even know if we have any jurisdiction over that, but I was just curious if that fiber optic I thought was often underground, but...
And I think on the west side, Astound has done a lot of the fiber optic on the, on the lines, because I, I know I, I'm a, I get astounded, so...
Look at the corner of Olive and Pacific, and then go up Pacific, and you'll see some pretty dramatic cabling.
About a year ago, a company, Astound, co-located their lines on the existing power utility lines, I'm guessing, but send us the picture.
Okay, I will do that, thank you so much.
I, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, I don't have any comments either, uh, great, just other than that, it was a great meeting, thank you guys. So, um, with that, do we have some staff comments?
Yes, um, so we discussed, I think at your last meeting, that we're gonna get everybody on the Commission iPad, so that we'll shift to a digital, um, paperless agenda process. So those are, have been ordered, um, they're coming in right now. So the IT department's gonna want to schedule an appointment with each of the commissioners, so you can come in, get it all set up, get your email set up, and do some basic training. So I think Marcy will work with each of the commissioners to make sure you have a date and time, and know where to go, so you can pick up your iPad. And then hopefully, by the next agenda or so, we'll, we'll have shifted to the, uh, paperless process. Um, other things going on, future projects, uh, so we continued that Tobin James Mixed Juice Project, hopefully that ends up on your next agenda, or it will be on your next agenda. There's also the, uh, 12th Street Bungalow Court project that's been around for a while, we expect that's gonna hit an October agenda. Um, as you know, the election's coming up, um, in November, there's a number of candidates for the different districts, um, this year. Um, so be aware of that, and then finally, the Olson-South Chandler Specific Plan. Um, if you haven't been out there recently, there's a lot going on, so Planning Area 13, which is on kind of the furthest end of Laney Road, they are now framing housing units there. Um, Sherwood, the new alignment of Sherwood that basically will connect down to Laney, past the R-Town, that's scheduled to be paved in September, as lo- well as the frontage roads along Fontana, and the repair of, um, old Laney Road, and then that airport road, and the roundabout, that's all gonna get paved here very soon. Um, also, the parks are under construction, so the Royal Oak Park, which is the existing city park, they're, they're building the basketball court and starting on those improvements. Turtle Creek Park, which is the linear park, um, the bathroom and pickleball court have been constructed, they're starting on some of the restoration paving that goes along there. Um, the pool house is under construction, as well as the farmhouse, so if you go out there, you'll see a lot of stuff. Um, they've got contracts with a number of merchant builders, um, besides just Spyglass, who's moving forward with Planning Area 13. So we have Shay Homes, Kayhoff, and Wathan Castanos, um, all moving ahead. Um, so you'll start to see their stock plans coming through on DRC agendas here very soon. So I know the planners are doing a lot of work, um, getting the different sub-phases ready for DRC review. So that's all exciting, very consistent with the city's, uh, housing goals, and, um, that'll conclude my report.
Great, well, thank you very much. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, and with that, uh, can I get an eye?
Aye.
Second eye, hey, thank you, everybody, have a great night.